Whoa.
Wow, that's kinda nice.
Who is she?
I don't know, but it's being recorded, so I have to press continue. All right, I'm just checking, Richard, can you hear us? I have a bad feeling about Richard's connection.
It was okay for the last meeting.
Yeah, I know, he's on twice and one, he keeps appearing and disappearing in front of the bridge.
The ones is connecting to audio.
Yep. Oh, boy.
Good times.
Good times.
So our next board meeting. When is it that we're gonna, is it the 11th that we're allegedly gonna go back to normal? So the next board meeting, we could be live. I mean, we're live. It's all these other.
I guess it depends on how many more people decide to get vaccinated.
Yep.
And whether a prisoner decides to add a footpath to his bridge before we get to stage five.
Well, I guess we're gonna.
Offer a lottery next.
I guess I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We do acknowledge that trustee Gust appears to be having some technical difficulties as soon as we. Well, we'll finish, we'll go ahead and have the clerk call the roll and see who all is actually here.
Okay, so we have trustee Gust.
He had to start with him.
Trustee Johnson, well.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Addison.
Here.
Trustee Cidic.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Farolo.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
Here.
And clerk McDonald with his presence.
All right, if you would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Jim, shut up. Our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands. Nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, just another check, Richard, are you with us? Technology.
Want me to call him?
You could try calling him.
We'll have three of them on.
We'll move into public comment for agenda items, is there anyone from the public that would wish to comment on any of the agenda items, if there is, please let us know, unmute yourself, let us know who you are and state your case. Not hearing any requests, there will be a second opportunity for a public comment at the end of the agenda. We'll then move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight includes the following. Approval of the village board regular meeting minutes from May 13th of 2021. Bills presented for payment in the amount of $130,761.25 and the public safety report from April 2021. Is there anything the board would have us consider separately?
I just have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
On the consent agenda where it states that I did not participate in the wrong call and the telephone was muted. That was not correct and I want that to be corrected because I was there and I got a recording on this technical thing that said I was unmuted by the host. So I'm not sure how that works, but I was there the whole entire time.
So that was from the meeting minutes from the last board meeting?
Yes.
All right, and.
So I know we got it corrected like immediately afterwards, but I would like the consent agenda to reflect that because I'm like, I'm here, I'm here and nobody could hear me.
Okay. All right, yeah, we go through this all the time with, just like we are with Richard, where we're not hearing anything on this end and so it's difficult to know whether or not you're hearing, but we certainly will acknowledge that you were participating in the, in the meeting and.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thank you.
All right, any, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Miller.
We have a motion.
Second, Jensen.
Second by trustee Jensen, discussion. All right, hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dust. Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Cidic.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. No success reaching trustee Gus on the telephone. All right, well, we'll move on to the mayor's report. First up, we have a resolution approving First Amendment to the Administrator's Employment Agreement. It's hard for me to fathom the passage of time and the need to do this, but we did just have an election and the administrator's term is always tied to the mayor's term unless there's a departure on either party prior to the end of that term. So we have before us an amendment, the First Amendment to the Village Administrator's Employment Agreement, which basically and simply amends his term to remain in effect from May 27 of 2021 through May, the final board meeting in May of 2025. And you have that document in front of you, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Addison?
Second, Miller.
Second by trustee Miller, discussion? All right, well then I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Addison. Trustee Cidic.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Welcome back, it's almost as though you never left. All right, next up, we have a resolution approving the appointment of Kleintorpe and Jenkins LTD to continue to serve as village attorney, proving the firm's engagement letter with the Village Beach Park. You have a memo as well as a resolution to that effect with attachments. Do we have a motion to approve?
So Jensen.
Second, Miller.
Motion by trustee Jensen, a second by trustee Miller, any discussion on this topic?
I have a Scribner's error to point out.
Scribner.
Looking at Exhibit A, Page 2, Dead Issuance Word, the lawyers love, they charge by the words, so they like to write it out and then, and then write it out in numbers in parentheses, and in this case, they don't match. We have 20 hundredths of a percent in words and point, 0.25% in numerals.
Sorry, I missed that, that should be two zero, we will make that, make that change.
Okay.
I just wanted to show you that I read your stuff.
Yeah, thank you, I'm flattered.
I caught that too, Dan.
How somebody should done it. All right, we have that amendment or correction, I should say, correction of Scribner's error noted, any other discussion? Now, I just wanna make sure that this agree, this agreement includes both Jim and Elizabeth.
It definitely does.
Okay, because, you know, nothing personal, Jim, but, you know.
Yes, it'll, the arrangement will continue just as it has the past two years, nothing, nothing will change. And we, as far as the rates go, what you see are the rates that were the 2020 rates that we've kept, kept in place for 2021 due to the effect on COVID on all the municipal budgets.
Greatly appreciated and we do certainly do appreciate the service that we've been receiving, so.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, thank you.
You bet, all right, any other discussion? With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Cidic.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
All right, so just checking in again on trustee Gus, no success yet?
I'll try again, I called like five times.
He's trying again, I see him, I see him trying to get in. I blame Comcast.
Damn 5G.
There you go.
Just goes right to voice.
Okay.
So he must be using his phone to try and log in.
All right, all right, well, we'll move on to the trustee reports, first up, we've got trustee Jensen with the Finance Committee.
I have very little to offer tonight apart from the date of our next Finance Committee meeting, which is June 23rd, 6:00 PM. And at least this next one will be virtual, hopefully, future ones after that may not be. We don't have any, any major items, routine stuff on the agenda this coming meeting.
Right.
So I have an offer.
Thank you. I'd ask for trustee Gus to report, but he's still trying to connect, it looks like, so we'll move on to planning, building and zoning, trustee Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have for your consideration. Motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Village Beach Park Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety Chapter 8.40, Leaking Landscape Burning Regulations to include a reference to recreational fires. A little summary that at the Building and Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting of April 22nd, 2021, Committee to Discuss the Potential Amendment to the Village's Leaking Landscape Waste Burning Regulations. Staff recommend a minor modification to the regulations to clarify that the regulations in Chapter 8.40 apply specifically to Leaking Landscape Waste Burning, Recreational Fires such as campfires are regulated by the Building Code. The Committee concurred with the suggested amendment, directed staff forward a recommendation to the Board. An ordinance amending the code as discussed is attached for the Board's consideration, and again, this is entertained in the form of a motion.
Second by Cidic.
All right, so we have motion by trustee Wells, second by trustee Cidic, discussion. All right, this is basically the clarification as stated and pretty, pretty benign, doesn't really change a whole lot, so there's no further discussion, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Cidic.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Your Honor, next we have consideration for motion to approve an ordinance granting a conditional use for a tavern in the Sheridan Road Corridor Overlay District B1 underlying zoning, the La Calle Bar and Grill at 37895 North Sheridan Road. And a little background, at the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of May the 6th, 2021, public hearing was held regarding the petition of Gerson Molina doing business at La Calle Bar and Grill for conditional use permit to allow tavern at 37895 North Sheridan Road. Materials submitted with the petition explained that the business intends to place a greater emphasis on food than the previous businesses at its location. Plan include improvements that were listed as condition of the liquor license agreement for the previous business such as additional landscaping and lighting for the parking lot. The Planning Commission discussed the petition and recommended approval subject to several condition of the approval. The main concern of the commission was that the plan for such visible security might hinder the business's effort to create a more family-friendly atmosphere. Recordition by the, by the commission allows for modification to the security plan without requiring a new public hearing. Again, ordinance that is include, include the conditions of approval as recommended by the Planning Commission have been drafted and attached for the Board's consideration. And again, this is entered in the form of a motion.
All right, we have motion by trustee Wells, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second him.
We have a second by trustee Addison, sorry.
Oh darn, I'll get the next one.
Discussion.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
What was the previous name of this particular business?
Addison and Clerks.
Thank you, okay.
Yep, and.
Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just curious, I, this has been a tavern as long as I've been a resident of Beach Park, I think. And I'm wondering why we haven't just zoned it as such and dispensed with the need to do conditional use permits when we have a change of ownership, but we already can vet them through the liquor license process. It seems like extra work for the staff and for the, for the operator owner.
Sure, what, what I can explain is that the way our zoning ordinance and specifically the Sheridan Road Corridor Overlay District requires a conditional use for various uses within the district that might not otherwise be required in a B1 district without the overlay. I've had extensive discussions with our zoning administrator about this topic and we may well be getting to the point that you're addressing in the future, it's gonna take some work. The overlay district was put in place to allow certain uses in the inevitable variations that are required because of lot sizes and some of the rest of the uses and under the conditional use permit, we can kind of massage all those without having to have 12 variances. That being said, it can get cumbersome and frustrating for all concerned as well, so I think you're on the right track, Dan, I really think that some of the discussions that I've had with, with Andrew are leading kind of back that direction. If it was.
I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of spot zoning, but this, again, this is a longstanding business and I understand the value of flexibility certainly and and the benefit to the village in, in negotiating improvements to the property and so forth and horse trading, which is is available to us, but in a case like this, it seems like it's a lot of extra work for both parties, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see it head in that direction for future such businesses.
Yep, there's, there's certainly pluses and minuses and I think this would be a great opportunity for all of us to kind of streamline some of the streamlineable parts and gain the control where we need it and, and yeah, it's, it's tough, anytime, you know, we have one true retail business owner in B1, we used to have two, it was HC and, I don't know, there was two designations anyway and.
I know we all wanna, we all wanna be welcoming and attracting businesses to, to our business corridors and and additional roadblocks that we throw up in their path are not gonna work in, in that direction.
Yep, yep, I've had this discussion actually with, with the, the, the business owner on this as well, he invited me over with, along with some of our staff to view the improvements that they had made and some of the changes they've made inside and I will say he's energetic and ambitious and I, I feel that he's got a great business plan here and looking forward to sampling the food and and getting him up and running here, so I think it's great that we're finally here and the, a little later on, we're gonna be talking about the liquor license, so. Yep, is there any other discussion, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple things I'd like to ask. That's the business owner, Garrison?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, there seemed to have been some concerns raised about, from the Plan Commission about too much security and yet in the documentation, it looks like you plan to have three to four bouncers during busy hours for security and also for the fact that at night, the atmosphere is more like a nightclub, can you kind of go into that, what's that all about? I mean, cause if, either, it seems to me like either the security is warranted or, or it isn't, but it sounds to me, based on what you've got here, that you think it is.
Yep. Did you want to address it, Garrison?
Yes, please, hi, how's everybody doing, good night? So the reason I, and I, and I see, I see, I see from your perspective how it sounds, the reason I've kind of even started addressing that was because I, I, just, just to be clear, I stepped in, I think it was July 2019 as the liquor license holder. But the building, I like, I didn't, I didn't learn until I quit my job and I started, and I actually started running the business. I didn't know the, the history of the place, you know, that the, the place has had for a long time, the stigma of it being a bar, you know, you know, they're being trouble and then, you know, when, when I stepped in, there was concerns that I felt like had to be addressed. But it, my, my vision, my goal is that we, we no, we no longer wanna be that, I wanna be a bar grill. I don't wanna depend on a night crowd, I wanna be able to have my family come in at noon and, you know, and I'll be able to generate revenue that way. The only reason I address security is just, you know, I, I want it to be for, you know, anytime after 10. It just, I think it's, it, you know, they're gonna be carding people, they're just, I think it's just for everybody's safety and it's a point that I've talked with, with the sheriffs and, you know, David, David advised me and, you know, Dave even said it, you know, too, you know, we're gonna be here, we're working with you. But yeah, that, that's the reason it's there, because of concerns I raised in the past, I feel like the place has a stigma of it being that, but that's not, definitely not what I'm going for, I wanna be able to sell food. I wanna be able to sell good food, I have a passion for good food, we wanna be able to sell good Latin American food and just offer a new dining option for the community.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, and my only other concern is the logo that was included, I'm not, I'm not a fan of the skull with the rose, I.
No.
I don't, I, I would never vote for something that had a logo like that. So maybe there's some, some option for change there, but I, I would not approve something with a sign on Sheridan Road that had that type of a logo, so. That's my last comment.
And I understand, it just, and it's for my, for, for us, you know, a little background on the restaurant, it's gonna be, you know, it's a strong, you know, emphasis on Latin American food and for us, and I understand the perspective that you're seeing it from, but for us, it's, it's for our culture, it's, it's an important sign of rebirth. For us, it's, you know, we got shut down March 15th, 2020, we've been shut down for over a year. You know, we're seeing it as a new start, you know, it, for us, you know, if you do like, you know, for Latin American culture, that is just a, it's a strong sign of rebirth. And, you know, it, it means a lot to us.
Why were you shut down in 2020?
Well, we were shut, we weren't shut down, we closed down because of the whole COVID, because of COVID, the, everything closed down, I decided, I decided I didn't wanna open up because I had a, I had a business partner, which the village is, is familiar with, that he was, he was, he was kind of manager before I stepped in and he was the one that was kind of attempting to run it like a nightclub and then that's when I came in and I had to talk with the village and I removed him as manager. And then when we, when we were closed down due to COVID, we kind of separated ways because, you know, I had a different vision, I had a vision that this is how I wanna run the place and, you know, he wasn't on the same page, so I, we decided to not, you know, not open and it took me about a couple months to decide what I was gonna do and what I, you know, what I would do and then from that point on, that's when I came in and we, we did the renovation to the building. We've done a lot of changes, you know, for it to be.
Were you the same liquor license holder previously?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Were you the previous liquor license holder previously to the application now?
Yes, as of from July 2019. From, not, not a long, I was only the liquor license holder for about seven months.
And what do you plan on doing differently this time, because I do know that the sheriff's office was at that place of business on many, many calls for problems?
What, I think.
Do you have a plan?
Yeah, definitely filtering, definitely filtering people at the door, but, you know, it's gonna start from, for one, we used to not open till late, for now, my hours of operation are gonna be noon, you know, until, until we close, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be a dining option, we're gonna offer catering, we're gonna offer food to go. You know, it's gonna be a whole different atmosphere, we're gonna have, certainly before, we didn't have waitresses, now we're gonna have waitresses. You know, we wanna, you know, eventually, we, I have a vision, you know, we have a lot of real estate outside, you know, maybe we wanna, you know, do a nice little outside area. I think it's, it's, it's a whole new business, that's the thing, that's why I'm changing name, I'm rebranding. It's just gonna be run differently, it's gonna be more of a bar grill, I'm gonna, you know, there's gonna be a huge emphasis on food, that's what this is all gonna be about, but at the end of the day, if you step into the business, you step in, the, the actual design of the place is, is a bar, most of it is, it's, it's kind of a run of bar. But that doesn't mean.
But what, what family businesses have to have security is my, that was a red flag to me. Most restaurants that serve food and alcohol do not have to have security on hand. So that's just a red flag to me, so that's all, that's all I have, thank you.
Well, I've gone to places where I've seen security, I've gone to places like, big places like, for example, Fat Man's on 41, you know, the reason, the reason I think eventually we got to that point is because we had a lot of people coming in, we had a lot more people trying to get in than, than we could fit.
Yeah, that's all, that's, that's all I had, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, on section six, item number two, just a little correction, it says that the full parking area will cover, and I think they meant to say will be covered by security cameras.
I'm sorry, I'm, which, which section are you in?
Section six.
Oh.
Number two, security plan.
Of the security plan.
Says that the full parking area will cover, I think they meant they will be covered by a security camera.
Maybe I'm not looking at the same security plan.
In the ordinance.
Page, it's on page two.
Page two of the business plan or page?
Page two of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance, thank you, I'm trying to.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, page two of the ordinance under section six.
Number two.
Security plan.
Security plan that the full parking area will cover, I think they meant to say will be covered.
Will be covered, yes, thank you, I'm with you now. That darn Scribner guy. Auto delete. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All right, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cidic.
No.
Trustee Wells.
Aftername.
Trustee Johnson.
Sorry, I was muted, aye.
Trustee Miller.
No.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
And trustee Gus is, trustee Gus, are you on the call?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll let the record reflect that trustee Gus has joined the call. Sorry, Richard, good, good to hear your voice.
Awesome.
Richard, were you present for the discussion about the most, the ordinance that's in, in place here for the, or that's on the table for the 37895 North Sheridan Road?
Yes.
Okay. The clerk did not call you for a vote, how would you vote?
Aye.
All right. So I'm counting three to three, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, actually, three to two with an abstention on part of trustee Wells, okay.
And this will need, this will need four votes, Mayor, to be successful to pass.
I will cast, I will cast a vote as mayor in the affirmative, so yes. Motion carries and I would admonish the petitioner, Gerson, that you obviously see that we have a split board and I guess that will amplify the goings on's over there, you have approval on the zoning matter from the village board, so we'll move on to the next steps here. Trustee Wells, was there anything else for you, under your report?
No, Your Honor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, moving on to trustee Miller, Public Relations.
Thank you, Your Honor, I wish I had something to say about Memorial Day, normally I do this time of year, we'd be all geared up and ready to rock, but not this year, I just would say look forward to 2022 and hopefully things will be back in place and that concludes my report.
And along with that, along with that, Mary, you mean I don't have to get up at the crack Monday morning and get the chairs out there, huh?
No, I guess you're safe.
I'm lucky today. I'm lucky today.
You're all by yourself over there, trustee.
I thought I'd meet you there. We can walk the park.
Yeah, I know.
Well, hopefully everyone will still give thought to the reason for the day and.
Yes, you got it.
Vice made by so many. So, all right. Um, trustee Gus, as long as you're, um, uh. Move, uh, uh, back with us. Did you have any report for Parks and Recreation?
Yes, we're, we are going to have a meeting, uh, for Parks and Recs next Tuesday. Hopefully we'll get some clarification on a few items and then hopefully we can move forward with, uh, our movie we're talking about.
Beautiful.
And that's it for me.
Okey doke.
Clarification, we, did that meeting get canceled? I got a cancellation on that meeting. Do we, do we do have a?
No, um, there was two, two links set out. Uh, I didn't update the first one by mistake. I sent out a Zoom meeting request, so it had the virtual information on it. So. There should be two requests, but the first one got canceled without, it didn't have the Zoom info.
So it was canceled because it didn't have the link to the Zoom.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. All right. Moving on then trustee Sittick, uh, Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, is the sheriff's office with us this evening?
Uh, he was briefly, but I do not see him.
Yeah, he got called out on emergency mayor. He sends his apologies. So not individual.
Lieutenant Cavelli is not with us. Okay.
Couple of updates on some things. Uh, so we'll catch him next time. Um, that's okay. And is the fire chief with us?
No.
Nope. Okay. All right. Um, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, moving on to public works, trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item. Uh, you can see the, uh, village engineer is recommending that we approve the final payment for last year's. The twenty twenty motor fuel tax street. Program. Uh, he's reporting that all the punch list items have been completed. Um, lien waivers have been, uh, received from all the subcontractors and the, this is releasing their final retainage. So I would make a motion that we authorize payment to Schroder Asphalt Services. Or publication number four final for the twenty twenty MFT project in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Yes, cool second to that motion.
All right.
Motion by trustee Addison, second by trustee Gus. Uh, discussion.
All right. Um, the irony is that, as I understand it, we're wrapping up the twenty twenty-one MFT program as we speak. Is that correct, Adrian? Yeah, so, uh, we'll be starting to see pay requests here pretty quick, too. Well, that, 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 uh, this year's program has just been extraordinary how quick they've gone and, uh, they have thirty day construction schedule. I mean, that's amazing. That's great. I, I, that doesn't get any better than that. All right, um, I guess.
Meanwhile, let's pay the guys from last year.
Yeah, yeah, let's get that over with.
Don't forget that.
Yeah. All right. Uh, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gus.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Motion carries.
That concludes the public works report, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, we have one item under the, uh, uh, tax increment finance committee, um, which I chair. Uh, it's a resolution establishing the corridor beautification program and ending the facade improvement grant program. This was discussed at the TIF committee, uh, and many of the board members participated in that discussion. Uh, basically, we've, uh, we, we've revamped or have rewritten, I should say, uh, the program to encourage, uh. People that have, uh, business code violations, um. And I exterior facade related, uh, or, uh, exterior appearance related, uh, code issues. To, um, come to the village and apply for, uh, a grant. Um, the grant initially is funded, uh, with forty thousand dollars. And it's established for a period of three years. Obviously, the board can, uh, change those parameters as time would, uh, time and need would allow. And, uh, the maximum contribution, uh, from the village would be ten thousand dollars. For a major project and five thousand for a minor project. And we'd have the option, uh, available of either a fifty percent reimbursement. Kind of along the lines of what was previously in place with the facade grant. But more importantly, a, um, forgivable loan. That, uh, would be forgiven, forgiven gradually over the course of three years. So that kind of holds the, uh, the property owner and, and business owner, um, uh, holds their attention. As they, uh, are required to stay in compliance during that time. And gives the village the opportunity to, to get some of the hotspots dealt with, um, with a little bit of assistance. We are basically, um, would not be awarding anything else under the facade grant program. Uh, and would formally close that with, uh, uh, when the grant awarded to the American Inn is paid or completed or expires. So with that said, um, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move, Miller.
A motion by trustee Miller?
Second.
Second by trustee Addison. Uh, discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions just quickly. Um, Andrew included a sample letter, I think it is, in the documentation. And I don't remember, did we say these letters are going to go out certified to the business owners or to?
We, we will send these out certified, uh, as we would a normal notice of violation.
Okay. Good. Has there been any thought to a bilingual version?
Uh, that's a good point. We do, uh, translate some of our materials. So, uh, we can, we can, uh, look into having a, uh. At least, uh, some portion of the letter translated, um, so that, uh, anyone who receives it knows how to contact us.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if nothing else, the paragraph that's outlined and says important. That might be good. Okay, that was all of my only two questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Sure.
Could, could, uh, non-conforming residential properties potentially qualify for this program that are located in the corridors?
You say a residential property?
Could non-conforming residential properties that are located in the corridors, could they qualify for this program?
I don't believe that was the intent. Is there any?
It was not the intent of the, uh, the program.
Yeah, it's, it's strictly geared towards businesses and business, uh, business properties and businesses themselves. And, and, yeah, it would have to be, um. Now, if it was a residential property being converted into a business, there might be an opportunity there, um, or into a business use, uh, I should say. Uh, but not intended for residential.
Would it be of any benefit to us to make sure that's clarified? If it's not actually stated in the ordinance? And we do have residential properties in the corridors?
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. Residential wouldn't be eligible, uh, eligible for TIF funding. And this is from the TIF funding. Now, you could in certain cases, but not if a, you know, homeowner was doing the work on their own.
Well, right. I mean, you, you do have residential projects that are funded by TIF, uh, you know, apartment projects. Things, things of that nature, but, but typically, typically they're not, TIF money is not used to, uh, support the rehabilitation of, uh. You know, single family homes, things of that nature. Um, and, and it's, it, this really isn't the nature of a facade improvement program. To try to improve the appearance of the, the corridor to, you know, generate development. So I, I, I think that's the, the intent. If, if that's not clear. Uh, I, 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 I don't, I don't know that we need to add any language because I, I'm, you know, the really, with a facade improvement program. And this is meant to be similar in nature. Um, residential property generally is not, is not covered.
Well. That's why we have board meetings and lots of different points of view and, uh, and interpretations. You know, I hadn't, I hadn't given that a single moment's question because we always kind of keyed this off of the facade grant program.
Could there just be the word business added to the title? A business corridor beautification program?
It says commercial corridor for the primary commercial corridors, but you could have residential.
Right. We do have existing residential in the commercial corridor, which.
Like Larry said, it would be non-conforming.
You can add some, maybe we can add a, a sentence, uh, modify the, the resolution to add a whereas clause, uh. Indicating that the, the program is not designed to, uh, assist. Larry, you're, are you just talking about single family residents or just straight residential?
I was primarily speaking of, um, resident in general.
So maybe a motion, uh, if, if the, the maker of the motion would amend to indicate, to add, uh, you know, a motion to approve the resolution. With some additional language clarifying that the program is designed for commercial use only. And then we'll write that language.
Would the maker approve that, uh, modification to the motion?
Who was the maker?
I think it was you.
Oh, okay. Yes. Okay, um, I amended my motion to include language to clarify the beneficiaries of this program.
To be commercial.
Be commercial.
Okay.
Only commercial?
Yes, only, only commercial uses.
Mr. Mayor, just one other thing. I just like to.
Wait, hold on a second. Let's get to the second before you, before you do that. Uh, are you, is it a potential change to the ordinance, Larry?
No, I just wanted to clarify something.
Okay, let's get the second amended before we do that, so I don't lose track of where we are. Who was the second on this, Mary Jo?
Trustee Addison.
Trustee Addison, do you consent to this?
I, yes.
Okay, we have an I, yes. Okay, go ahead, trustee, uh, Wells.
Um, just want to mention that too, typically anything over two units, it's generally done under the commercial code. So I'm not sure if that factors in in any unique way as well.
I think the idea here is commer- commercial slash non-residential. I think that's the intent. And we will write that language based on the motion. We will add, uh, similar language.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
An important, important note, too, is these all have to come to the board for approval. So.
Yes, yes, everything will come to the board. Yeah. But it does, the clarification is, might prevent a, yep.
Yep, more complication.
Understood. All right. Uh, hearing no further discussion, I would ask clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Gus.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Mayor, the motion carries. Let the beautification begin. All right, uh, that concludes my report. Uh, moving on to staff reports. Anything exciting from the staff tables? I mean, first of all, I'd like to say it's exciting that the entire staff, uh, senior staff is here. So that's exciting. Um.
Based on all the no nods, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Uh, Mark, Mark, if I may add, uh, to, at the last meeting, the board approved a, a real estate contract to sell vacant land. To, uh, uh, Community Consolidated School District Three. Uh, that was the land at one oh three oh three West Beach Park Road. Uh, today we, we successfully closed on that sale and the proceeds are, uh, have been wired to the village's, uh, bank account.
Perfect. Thank you for following up. I got hand cramps yesterday signing a bunch of stuff, so.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we don't have any old business on the agenda. We have new business. Um, who is presenting this one? Is this me or is this you? Now, you.
Yeah, we put that on the agenda. I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, um, but we had to place it after the CUP. That normally would be under the mayor.
Basically, what we have here is a, um, a continuation of the discussion with, uh, uh, the, uh, new business at the, uh, on Sheridan Road. Obviously, as a tavern, uh, liquor license would be required. Uh, this, uh, petitioner is requesting. That we would make a class A and a class B, uh, license available. The class A license is the tavern license and the class B is the outside beer garden, however you want to phrase it, license. Um, basically the same two licenses that the business had, uh, previously. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter five point one six of title five of the Village of Beach Park. Illinois Village Code by modifying the number of liquor licenses. Do we have a motion?
Don't move, Miller.
We got a motion by trustee Miller?
Second.
Second by trustee Addison. Discussion.
I actually wondering, you know, because I've seen the CAD reports on the previous property. And the number of calls that were at this particular business under the same person really disturbs me. Um, I am a no all the way around. I've just seen too many CAD reports and the sheriff's reports on this particular property with the owners and I'm out.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, uh, I asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
No.
Trust Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
No.
Trustee Wells.
Epstein.
Trustee Gus.
Hi.
And Mayor Hooker.
Yes. All right. Again, the motion carries, um, four to two to one abstention. And again, the admonishment to the petitioner. Uh, once again, um, be, be aware that, uh, although you do have the, um, you don't have the license yet, uh, we'll be talking about that. But, uh, you have the, um, barely have the approval of the board for your venture. And I hope that, um, for those that support you, that you'll make us proud. And for those that, uh, are concerned, you'll, you'll, uh, show them the light. So, um, with that, um, we, uh, have resolved. We have, um, citizens wishing to address the board, any citizen on any topic. I would ask is that you'd unmute yourself and, uh, state your name and state your case.
Bob Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, how are you, sir?
I'm just doing great tonight. Listen, uh, I would hate to be telling you that I looked in my crystal ball. But my crystal ball said that, uh, that's an error to, uh, have that, uh, place open on Sheridan Road again as a tavern. Because of, uh, the problems. And I, I predict that it's going to be cruisers number two. So I hope that it doesn't happen to the employee, uh, employees and the owner of the new business. But unfortunately, it has a bad stigma already on it because of the people that are involved. So that's all I have to say about it. I would have voted in error. I think it was voted in error to allow it into Beach Park without further, further investigation. And I hope the sheriff's department will keep us informed about all the calls that they make over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to address the board? All right. Hearing none, uh, we have no cause tonight for an executive session. Do we have an item to?
Oh, yes. Might I offer a motion to adjourn?
You might, and you did. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second by Gus.
All right, we got a motion, a second, uh, discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Trustee Wells, do you, okay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all and, uh, have a good night.
Night, everyone.
Night, everyone. Have a long weekend, possible.
And, yeah. Have a good holiday, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.